Great, thank you. Okay. So.
Our agenda is up here, baby.
Moving on to item number three, which is my update. I did want to provide a little bit of an update and a couple of things. So Jacqueline, go to screen share for me. Going, but we had a couple of good things going on in the town. Some of you may have seen the press release from last week. We priced above a bond anticipation note and bond offering last week, raising approximately forty point five million dollars. Ten and a half is in twenty year bonds with an effective interest rate of three point three percent. And then, and then thirty million dollars in bond anticipation notes, which are basically short term bonds that we will take out next year into long term bonds as we kind of move forward and we ramp up construction on a number of our projects. We had a lot of bidders and our rates were very attractive. So we're excited that got done successfully. The other good news we got on Friday was the town was awarded a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the state of Connecticut to assist us in the Poulsen Generator project. So you, some of you may recall, last year we received a million dollars from the federal government to help pay for that. This is installing a emergency backup generator at Poulsen School. And similar to what we kind of experienced today, we know our town is very vulnerable to power outages. So.
What happened today?
So to be able to offer a better, more, better service level to residents when we do lose power, this new generator at Poulsen will offer a much better facility than what we currently offer, which is at the town campus gym. So this project is kind of ongoing, but we're excited. Any extra money helps offset what we will have to pay in terms of using our taxpayer dollars. So that was exciting to be fond of, put that on Friday. And that got voted on at the state bonding commission. So we're excited about that. And then the other thing, I know a lot of people have received their revaluation letters from the town revaluation that started, that process started at the beginning of this year. And finally, through all the, you know, work that's been done by our assessor's office, along with our consultant, vision appraisal, much of it sent out. I know that there were many people that were, I'll just say, very upset when they got the letter. And so I just want to, you know, spend a minute or two talking about what the letter actually means. So it doesn't mean your property taxes are going up thirty or forty percent. It's just the whole town basically has been revalued and the whole grand list of the entire town is going up. And so I'm going to spend a second or two going through that. As many of you, your letter lays out an informal process where you go in and talk to the vision appraisal to question and point out things. And then if you're unsatisfied with that process, then you can go on to a more formal appeals process early next year, which includes a review by our Board of Assessment Appeals. So that's a regulated process and we have a elected body that reviews those appeals. So if we can go on to the next slide, but I just want to spend a minute to give a little historical context. It's not easy to read these slides, I think, but I think that, first of all, the overall growth right now of the grand list, which is not going to be finalized, we turned it into the state January thirty first. So there'll be some up, you know, revisions and slight changes, but overall the grand list grew thirty eight percent. And if residential properties grew forty five percent and commercial properties went up thirty percent. So it gives you kind of a general view of like the whole grand list growth. And then typically the mill rate adjusts the opposite direction of the grand list goes down or up. So, and you can see the bar chart on the right, it's just our annual mill rate dating back to nineteen ninety nine. And see that where the bars drop down, that was usually a revaluation happened. So the mill rate is set in May by the Board of Finance and it goes into your tax bills in June. So right now the mill rate will stay the same. And then after the budget is passed in May, the Board of Finance will sit down and pass a new mill rate. And it's highly likely that it'll be a much lower mill rate. And that's historically what has happened. The bar chart below shows you, I talked about this inverse relationship between the mill rate and the grand list. So as the mill rate, as the grand list goes up, you can see the blue bar, the mill rate goes down by a percentage. Now, it's not a direct correlation because there are so many different factors that go into calculating this, calculating our tax bill. But it just shows you there's an inverse relationship between the two. And so rest assured, the mill rate will be adjusted downward when we go through this process at the next spring. Next slide. And then this was an example, our finance office pulled together quickly just to give you an idea. If you just looked at like today's budget and today's mill rate, and then you changed your assessment to reflect an increase to your assessment, what would that mean for your tax bill? And so it shows that right now, if there's no change in your tax, no change in your assessment. And so when you got your letter, if your assessment number did not change at all, you actually could see a reduction in your taxes. And right now thirty eight percent, the column in the middle reflects what the overall grand list grew. So if your assessment for your property grew thirty eight percent, you pretty much see no change in your taxes because you just rose with the entire grand list. So everything is kind of still all equal. But then if you saw an assessment increase higher, like fifty percent higher than the thirty eight percent, that means that your taxes actually might go up. I'm not talking about this last tax bill. I'm just saying this is illustrating what might happen with the assessment, how your assessment changes. So it gives you a little bit of an idea about, you know, what the impact could potentially be based on what news you got in that letter. And then the last slide is probably overly complicated, but I think it's just helpful to see what goes into that mill rate calculation. And then first thing with the brackets on it, it's not just all the budget. It's a lot of different assumptions that go into creating what the revenue that the town needs, the net revenue that we need. So you, we need money to run town. And then we also need money for these tax relief programs that we offer to our senior citizens and veterans and firefighters and everything else. But we also get revenue in through, you know, fees and different things in town, programs that you sign up for, things like that. We also get revenue from the state every year for lots of different revenue streams come into the town from the state. We also get interest income, which right now is quite attractive on our fund balance. And then, and then also the Board of Finance may choose to take an appropriation from fund balance when he's calculating the mill rate to come, the Board of Finance may vote to do that, would say, okay, this is what we need to raise for the revenue to meet all our obligations. And then you divide that by the grand list. So the grand list is the denominator that's growing. So, and then you multiply that and you come up with your mill rate. So this is kind of, it's a very complicated, this is a very simplified way of trying to show what we have this complex spreadsheet that does all this. But so anyways, and then obviously that mill rate then gets applied to the market value for property times seventy percent because we only tax you on seventy percent of your property value. And then that comes up with what your annual property taxes is. So, so this is just some background to help. And some of this is on the town website and I'll also put these slides up on the town website to help people. And then I think we're going to try to put a little bit more information over the next couple of weeks on the website about the revaluation, the process and understand what the assessment others mean for you from a taxpayer standpoint. So, so that, that's, that was kind of my comments for this morning because I know there was a lot of concern calls that were coming in last week and, and wanted to provide something helpful. So, so good, we're good with that, Jacqueline. And we'll make sure that gets posted in the next few days up on the website. Any other, and that's what the rest of my comments, or obviously I should comment, I'm sorry. I want to thank the hard work of the management team, the police department, our volunteer firefighters, public works department in dealing with the events today with the storm. It was kind of unpredictable day. Sometimes these things are, you think it's going to come a lot earlier and end up coming out later where people were going out about in school and everything else. I know there was a lot of disruption in town with some of the, this is, you know, the school problems they had with the busing. And, and then obviously there was an issue with Daniel Hand, I know. So we got through the day, everybody got home safely, and I think that's the most important thing. And I think we're down to, we were what, two hundred houses without power?
Two forty four.
Two forty four, okay. So we're down from over, close to two thousand, wasn't it?
Yeah, just under eighty.
Yeah, so, so earlier today we were at that eighteen hundred and they're working hard to restore everybody back to power. So if by tomorrow morning you're still having issues, please contact the town hall and we'll see what we can do to assist you. But grateful that everybody was safe and all the kids got home safe and probably enjoyed a shorter school day than anticipated. And I know it was a little frazzling for parents, being a parent, also two kids that were impacted by this. We all know it was a little crazy, but we're all, everybody was safe. So with that, I'll turn it over to the towns and sports and social comments. Comments?
Item one. Massing and Family Services had their meeting last week. And it was a great update. Every two years they do this student survey at Daniel Hand. And the data is compiled and they come back with this really robust presentation. I know Scott Cochran probably will be coming to this board and, you know, wanting to show it to us. But it's incredible to look at, it's really focused on, you know, drug use, alcohol use, stress, anxiety, things that are going on in the schools with our teens. And the trends that they come up with and are able to evaluate and then provide back some ideas, thoughts, recommendations on how we, anything, some of that as a town is impressive. So I know Jeremy and I both sit on that floor and got to participate on that. I think there were some eye opening conversations about different things that are happening on TikTok, whether it's vaping, whether it's marijuana use, but it was, it was very eye opening. And I'm really glad that we do this. And our Massing and Family Services actually adds an addendum to a standard survey. So they've actually compiled extra questions. So the students are sitting there, you know, between thirty minutes and an hour taking the survey. And it's great data. We'll hopefully get a chance to peek at that at the board and, and I think the community will as well. So and I know there's sessions happening around town, one at the high school.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other updates or?
I'll give a quick update on the academy building committee for the community center. Committee continues to meet regularly and continues to meet their time milestones. They, a committee will be receiving some very key information during January from two different firms which are estimating what the cost of the project is going to be. Two separate independent firms will be coming forward with their estimates. And so I imagine that information will reach this Board of Selectmen February.
So that's the next time we can give an update for a while from them. So I know they've been working hard.
There's nothing to update at the moment until the numbers come back.
Okay, great.
Not mine, my commissions are all on holiday, though.
I think we're all there. All right, with that, I guess we'll put it up to citizens comments. I know we have a number of people here in the room. So maybe I'll take comments from the room and then people who are attending remotely, just raise your hands and then Jacqueline can elevate you. So I guess if anybody, anybody here wants to make any comments tonight or no? No hands raised in the room or, okay, yes, stand up, just your name and address, please. Keep it under two minutes, possible, so.
Absolutely. So name is Ned Groves, the twelve Texas Road in Madison. I know that there's going to be discussion about funding some of the initiatives that the police departments put together. There's been discussion about, you know, how, what kind of tools and strategies and plan. And I just want to sort of emphasize the fact that no matter what, how great a plan it is, if you don't have the resources to successfully execute the plan, it really doesn't go anywhere. So I just wanted to lend my support for the resources that are coming up that I guess you all will vote on or in terms of, I guess, more staff and more technology to help better keep our community safe. I guess the last comment I have is, you know, it's, it's great to also have the tools to mitigate issues that are in your town now, but I also think about the tools that they're putting forward that will help mitigate future threats and manage, future threat management. So those are my comments.
Great, thank you.
Can you tell us the difference between the time to do the comments now and ones at the end of the?
It's really your, your choice. I mean, you can do it at the beginning or the end of the meeting. The meeting will take as long as it takes, I guess. So, so it's, it's yours first.
I'd like to speak now.
Yep.
My name is Cynthia Perry. I've lived on thirty one Neptune Avenue for twenty three years and before that on Warthills for twelve years. I have asked to speak to you tonight for a critical reason. Madison has not done all it has done, all it can do to make our streets safe. And I repeat that, you've not done everything you could do to make ours, our streets safe. Criminals are haunting the neighborhood, sometimes in broad daylight, stealing their cars. But they're also robbing everybody that sense of safety and well being. Data shows that they are terrorizing our entire community all the way from Rockland Preserve down to the beaches. In, I think it's the last week, there have been a number of hits in northern Madison. Our residents are frightened, anxious and angry. You would think that a town with our resources would be among one of the torchbearers leading the charge against these gangsters. Sadly, this has not yet been the case. But Chief Drum has put together a strong plan to do more, much more, if the Board of Selectmen will approve his recommendations. The program is based on stronger technology to identify threats before they become crimes. And the increased police presence we need, especially during the evening hours, late evening, I mean, like, you know, the two AM, three AM, when most of these crimes do occur. As a parent, and I'm sure many of us here are parents, we learned that our first obligation is to keep our children safe. That's more important than any other thing for a child. I'd like to ask the Board of Select, sorry, I've lost my spot. I'd like to ask you all to recognize that your first priority is to keep all the residents of Madison safe, children are not. Cuts may need to be made. We may need to forego some expensive initiatives. But Chief Drum needs the resources to do the job effectively. And the safety of our community is paramount. Thank you.
Any other public comments in the room?
I have some comments, but I didn't know whether it would be appropriate to refer to you're going to.
I would assume that during the agenda item, we were about to do the line of conversation with the chair of the police commission. So there was other, somebody, your hand raised? Yeah.
Joseph Walton, toll baby place, had the opportunity to participate in this board meeting last week. It was very informative, very helpful. I am part of the Barbary Farms Association, lived there for twenty two years. And I was kind of drafted to be a liaison to make Madison safer organization committee, whatever you choose to call it. There's a lot of anecdotal things that, you know, we talked about, and it's a lot of horror stories. One of the things, I was a victim, my car was stolen a number of years ago, but it was, but the same, same procedure, the same processes, et cetera. Very disheartening experience happened on Easter Sunday morning. Ready to go to church and it's like, where's my car? And then subsequently the car was found, whatever, Connecticut, trashed. Usual things that were, found the individual because I had tremendous video and audio that I turned over to the police, slap him in the hand, let him go. So this problem clearly is not just a Madison police issue. It's multi-tiered, we recognize that. What I have found out, becoming part of this groundswell of people, is that within ninety six hours of putting together a petition, we had over sixty, seventy percent of our fifty one, almost seventy percent sign on to this. Because it's, there are a lot of incidents, but the real issue, Cynthia touched on it, it is a public safety and security issue. The anecdotal things that came up in some of these previous discussions were afraid to take my kids out. I don't sleep out in the backyard with them anymore. I'm afraid to take my dog out with them anymore. And just, and there's all kinds of examples of this kind of incident. So we are very supportive of the technology initiative that the chief and his team and whatever additional headcount that he's looking for. We've looked at a lot of the data, but there is, and it's not just the lower Liberty Street area. I mean, this stuff is happening. We just had a couple of.
Or I think.
Yeah, I have a, I have ring cameras. And one of the things that I made a note to Jim Forenzy and a couple of other folks, that a lot of times you get the coyotes, the foxes, everything else. Now, what you're getting is last week, four, four attempted snatch and grabs in people's driveways. And what I have found, come to find out that in this ring network, people don't report it. They don't report it necessarily to the police department. It's, it's like no neighborhood thing. So this thing's really being under reported in the sense of some of the things that are happening. And so now we're going to try to connect that to this issue that's underway because it is, it's important. And it really is, it's, it's people, as I talked to a lot of our residents, frightened. And that's real, you know, with kids, early in the morning or somebody, somebody's kid coming home late at night. I will say a couple of things, especially I said this to the chief, the visibility of the vehicles is markedly improved. I live on Baby Place at the end and I can see most of the part of the shoreline. And it is clear that that makes a big difference. And I also think there's some suggestions that I'll work with him on in terms of where you can have stationary vehicles with their lights on, you don't have to have people in just to perhaps create a sense of, you know, there's somebody there watching them coming in and out. So anyway, we're very supportive, hopefully, when we discuss this evening. And on behalf of the Barbary Farm Association, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Great, thank you for the comment. So I know we have a few hands raised, so we'll go to online.
Okay, I'm, yep, I'm gonna unmute Jim.
Yeah, and just trying to keep it to less than two minutes if we could. And I know we did, we haven't received a lot of emails, we've got petitions, so we understand all the public concern on this issue.
Yeah, thank, thank you, it's Jim Forenzy speaking. Before we go, can, can, can somebody give me an estimate as to how many people are online? I can see there are about a, maybe ten or so citizens in the room, but is there an estimate as to how many people are logged in?
Yep, sorry, I had responded to your question, it's about fifteen.
Okay, thank you. So I, I just want to follow up on a couple of points that Joseph and others have made. So obviously we, we had a, a good turnout last, at last Thursday's Board of Police Commissioners meeting. I see Ed Dolling and Chief Drum there. That was a very good discussion. If you have not watched that video, the various members of the Board of Selectmen, I would encourage you to do that. There, there's story after story that reinforce what Joseph just said and, and what, and what Cynthia just said about the fear, the frustration and the anger that are gripping our community. Obviously, Mr. Goldberg was there, so he heard all that firsthand. And I think that the key takeaway that I have from that is that no one in our community should live this way. And it's not a good look, candidly, it's not a good look for the town of Madison. Again, just a couple other points to put on the record because maybe not everybody here that's watching is familiar with this. You know, there's, there's been numerous engagements by the community with, with various town officials dating back to the summer of twenty twenty one, when this whole problem first became apparent to us as citizens. On December first, as Peggy knows, as Al knows, as other, as others that were there know, you know, of us met with Peggy, Al Goldberg, Jean Fitzgerald, Ed Dolling and Chief Drum to convey our concerns in person. And then Peggy alluded to the petition. You know, we submitted a petition on November thirtieth that was signed by two hundred seventy seven concerned citizens. Some of them are here today. That number is growing. And so again, I want to reinforce that there's this broad based community support for everything that we're talking about here tonight. And that, and that petition, while it may seem to be inconsequential, it, it deals with public safety. So it goes at the heart of something that's very important to the governmental function in our town. And by the way, we believe, and maybe we're being self-serving here, we, we believe that petition was unprecedented in the town's history because of what it deals with. And at its heart, what it, what it recommends, what it recommends is a call to action. So with that background, I, I just want to segue to something that, that essentially Ed Dolling, the, the chair of the Board of Police Commissioners has characterized himself as being a watershed moment that requires a hardening of the target. And that's why coming out of the meeting last week with the Board of Police Commissioners, we understand that they're recommending two things. Number one, implementing certain technology related solutions, more specifically license plate reading cameras that I believe are going to be discussed tonight. But number two, and this is also important, and Joseph just alluded to it, hiring more police officers to increase the police presence in vulnerable neighborhoods and elsewhere is needed around the town. Now, we understand, and I mentioned this on, on, on last Thursday, we understand that this recommendation has been put in front of the Board of Police Commission, I'm sorry, put in front of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance previously, and each year has not been met. And we're at a point where our view simply is listen to the experts. The experts are the Board of Police Commissioners and the Madison Police Department. And they're saying they need these resources. So we're, we're imploring the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to do what we asked in the commission, in, in the petition, which is to give them the resources they need to, to, to really deal with this threat to our safety and our quality of life. So when I step back, I've been around this for the past two and a half years. And I think there really are two closing points I would make. Number one, personally, I believe this threat is here to stay. And I further believe that it negatively impacts the entire town of Madison, not just in terms of public safety, but it could have an irreparable negative impact on our town's reputation and ultimately on property values. And at this point, I, I believe the town has to take aggressive action to deal with what I believe is a clear and present danger before something really bad happens. So in closing, thanks for listening, but I really hope, I sincerely hope, you'll fully support the Board of Police Commissioners and the Madison Police Department in their ongoing efforts to keep us safe. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment. I do want to make one correction for the record. There has not been a repeated request for new staffing over the last two years. There were requests two years ago for three police officers that both the Board Selectmen and the Board of Finance supported. Two police officers have said we continue to assess the situation. So, but obviously we're starting our new budget process and the police department will then make additional requests this year. So just want to make that correction. But thank you for your comment. And I know we have some other hands raised online.
Okay, Jacqueline.
Cunningham.
Hi, this is Johnson Cunningham. I live at seventy six Middle Beach West in Madison. Thank you very much for the opportunity to chat. I won't take too much time, I just want to echo the same concerns that Joseph and Ned and Jim have articulated. I also signed a petition that was presented last week. And it's frightening to live in a town that is supposed to be safe, where we have enjoyed a beautiful environment for many, many years to, to have to deal with these hoodlums that come into our community. I was a victim myself, my house, my truck, and my car was trashed at the train station. All the glass, you know, the windows were broken into and the police department took my car away where I had to claim it. So nobody was hurt. And the culprits were apprehended and charged, which I think is a little different than in most situations. But it still doesn't change, it does change how you feel about where you leave your belongings, how you leave your belongings, how long you believe your, your belongings, and how you feel when you come back late at night on your own. So it is a fundamental public safety issue and we shouldn't feel unsafe in our own town. So I would just like to share that with everybody and I appreciate the time to talk. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comment.
Fran Brady.
Hi, thanks. Good evening, I'm Fran Brady of one oh eight NSC Lane in North Madison. First, I wish to thank the town for the one hundred dollar award that is being given to Daniel Hand High School's Eco Club in support of their relaunch of their recycling campaign. Principal TJ Salatari and the club's moderator, science teacher, Elisa Bracco, are very thankful for your consideration, as, as I am. This money will come from the Connecticut NIP surcharge program that every six months sends our town and every town in Connecticut a sum of money equivalent to five cents for every fifty mil liquor NIP sold in our town. So far, our town receives approximately five thousand dollars every six months or about ten thousand dollars a year. Talk about a revenue stream. This amazingly and outrageously represents over a hundred and eighty eight thousand NIPS sold in our town every year by our seven liquor stores. That's almost a half a million since the program started. Think about that. And just to remind everyone, the twenty twenty one Connecticut law requires that the municipalities receiving these funds use them for environmental programs to help reduce waste and manage litter, the litter that NIPS. for environmental programs to help reduce waste and manage litter, the litter that NIPS cause that are all over the place. I'm here tonight to ask that a formal process is created to manage these funds and to ensure that they go to the appropriate environmental programs and not into a general pool of money. I would further suggest that it's, if not the Public Works Department, the Town Solid Waste Disposal Committee should be considered as the ideal town body to manage this. But you know better about the way these things are run. We have lots of ideas at, like the Daniel Hand program, like marketing of the food scrap pilot expansion and other cost-saving environmental programs related to waste where these funds could easily be appropriately applied to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Yep, thanks. Other hand raised, yes.
Yep. Are you going in the room? Sorry. Or am I still going online?
Online, yep.
Okay, Kevin Ton.
Oh, hi, that's me. I'm not a NIP guy. I'm a police issue guy. My name's Kevin Tonner. I'm at 150 Middle Beach Road where I've been for, I guess, over 25 years now. I'd like to echo many of the things that Cynthia and Joseph and Ned and Jim and others have said. But I'd like to emphasize two points, one of which is the sense of violation that many people don't speak of, but that is very real. Those of us who have had our cars stolen or who have had our safety interrupted indeed feel an extreme sense of violation and that's kind of normal. I also think one has to keep in mind how people feel about being insecure in their neighborhoods. And that alone, I think, is a very important reason to address these issues. But the most important reason, and, and I, I know many of you in the room know this, but I want to reemphasize that many of these young men who are stealing these cars are armed. And I probably don't need to remind you that in recent months, I guess it was in North Branford, they actually shot at a homeowner in the middle of the day while trying to steal his automobile from his driveway. And the police know only too well how many of these folks have been armed and have shot either at police officers or at others. Just imagine, just imagine how everybody in this room would feel if somebody gets hurt badly. Just imagine if tomorrow night, it's my wife or somebody's child who comes upon these people stealing a car and they're shot. The second aspect of this is that there is a ground swell of, yes, concern, but frankly, also anger that leads to concern. And what that means is that the citizens are potentially going to be put in a position that they don't want to be in. We don't want neighborhoods to have to move to vigilantes or neighborhood watches and things like this in order to protect ourselves because that will increase the risk of harm to the neighborhood. And we all know that the police officers will tell us, we shouldn't be doing that. So the final thing I want to say is I think Madison has an extraordinary opportunity here. We can step up and be the community that starts to take very serious action to try to stop this. Now, I come from New York City, and when I was a kid in New York City, one of the things you did when these kinds of things happened is you made people understand that maybe they should go somewhere else to launch their mayhem. So maybe we have an opportunity by providing these resources to the police to actually send a message that these kids should, wherever it is they want to go, they just shouldn't go here. And I think that would be a great thing to do. Now, the final thing I want to say is this in 25 years, you people have never heard Kevin Tonner before advocating to spend more money. But here I am, I'm saying we should spend the money we need to spend to get this done. And it's the best use of town money that I can imagine. Certainly a lot more important than a meeting room at the Academy Community Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. We do have a few more hands raised, so please, if we can limit it to two minutes or less, I appreciate it.
Karen Lennon.
Yes, thank you. Karen Lennon, 34 Waterbury Avenue. I'm also the co-president of the Waterbury Avenue Beach Association. I'm also a member of a family that's been part of the Madison community for four generations. I learned how to be independent in this town. What a town, what a blessing this town is. It's such a beautiful place to raise children and my grandchildren now. I am saddened by the fact that my grandchildren, I won't let them take their, their, I won't let them do sleepovers on the porch or on the beach anymore. I'm not going to let them do that. I can't. I'm afraid they'd be endangered. This summer, my 12-year-old son was getting, sorry, grandson was getting ready to leave after two weeks of spending time here. And I asked him where his sports equipment was and he said, oh, it's in the car. I'll go get it. I said, no, 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 I'll go get it for you. I'm, I'm so saddened by this. I have been, as a member of the Madison, of the Waterbury Beach Association, I've worked with Chief Drum in the Police Department on other issues. They have been responsive. They have been productive and they've worked with us beautifully. And I feel that it is my responsibility to do the same for them and to support them and what they are telling you as experts, as professionals that they need. I think there are three levels of responsibility in this issue. There's the, the, there's the individual citizen, some of whom continue to leave their cars unlocked, unacceptable. Then there's the, the town leadership, elected and appointed, whose responsibility is to keep the citizens informed and to do what they can to protect and give the, the Police Department what they need to do their job. And then there's the state. It's a very complicated situation and I understand it. And there's all three of these folks, all three of these entities need to step up and be responsible. My heart is breaking. My town, my beloved town, doesn't feel safe. Please, please, I beg of you, support Chief Drum, support the Police Department. Please. Thank you.
For your comment. We have two more hands raised.
I don't know this person's name, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Karen Singh, 92 Middle Beach Road.
Thank you.
So I, it's not lost on me that this meeting started with us talking through how our taxes are going up. And I'm one of those neighbors who, I'm there during the summer. I come, I kind of enjoy the town, I pay the taxes. And in 2020, I watched helplessly as at about 2:00 AM, as a car pulled up, five people got out of it. And not only did they rifle through my neighbor's cars, but they also went on the doorsteps of my neighbor's houses and looked in the door. And I can tell you, I'm surprised that we were on the doorstep of 2024 and we're now having this conversation with town leadership because this has been an ongoing issue, as Jim said before me. And it is just a matter of time. It's not, to Kevin's point, it's not an imagine what's going to happen. It is a, it's going to happen. Someone is going to confront one of these people. And something bad will happen. I'd actually like to hear from the town leadership as to why has it taken so long for you all to get there because it seems like academy school is being turned into a community center to be used by a small percentage of the people faster than us having police protection for an ongoing problem that dates back to actually, I remember the starting when we bought our first house in Madison in 2009. And I am perplexed as to why this has taken so long and why it's been so resistant. Can someone answer me on that?
So this is public comment, so the board just listens to public comment and takes it into consideration. Usually it's related to an agenda item, which is technology.
Okay, well then I definitely support more funding for the police. I think it's rather more important than some of the pet projects that seem to go on in the town. But at some point, it would be nice if someone could address why it's taken so long for this to seem, for this to become a critical item and why it's taken this level of public outrage. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And one more hand raised, and then we'll.
Diana.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Diana Hall of 18 Waterbury Avenue. I'm Vice President of the Waterbury Beach Association. And we are, I am and my husband, and we are a victim of these crimes that we're talking about. Back in March of 2020, our car was stolen right out of our driveway in the middle of the night while we were all home and my adult children home because of COVID. We did recover the car in New Haven because we had the app on the phone and were able to locate it. They dusted for fingerprints. They took it back to the police station, dusted for fingerprints. Eventually I did get my car back. And two more recent events. And I just want to emphasize that these are times that we are aware of, but there could have possibly been other times that we have been victimized. So about a year ago, our car, the alarm went off in the middle of the night. My husband jumped up to, as a reaction to the alarm going off and stopped himself from going outside. And as one of the other, one of our other neighbors had mentioned with the, that shooting in Branford, I think that's, might have come to mind when it stopped him from running out into the driveway. That same evening, our neighbor next door, his car, they attempted to break into his car as well. And then most recently, just a month ago, my neighbor across the street was woken up by her lights going off in her driveway. When she looked out her window, she saw two of these criminals trying to get into she and her husband's car. This actually has been the second time in the few, past few months that her car, she woke up to that same situation. She noticed a car backing down the road. They came across the street to my car, attempted to break into it and apparently took off. And I think that same evening, they did end up stealing a car a few neighborhoods away. When I called the police the next morning to report it, there were fingerprints all over my car and these thieves tried to break into my car because there were marks on my door. When I asked about dusting for fingerprints, they said that that wasn't something they can do because of the cost. I said, okay, can you, is there any way for me to find out what happened to my car when my car was stolen back in 2020? Because they did dust for fingerprints. They looked it up right there, you know, on their computer and that is still in limbo. It still has not been completed. And they said possibly because of cost. So my husband and I are in full support of these initiatives. I want to thank Jim for all of his efforts and everybody who has come forward because this is not something that can wait. I completely agree and echo what everybody else is saying. I feel unsafe and uncomfortable in my own home most of the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take one last from the room. Then we do have a meeting to get, we got to get to the issue, so.
Hi, I'm Allison, I was 55 Middle Beach Road. I lived in Madison for three years, absolutely love it. But every year it's escalated. This is something new to me, this process coming here. I have to tell you, just garriness is just making me even more scared and anxiety ridden that I live by myself and my car, and I am a victim. And so, but the thing is, is now, it's not so much that they went through my car. It's when I come home from the supermarket now and it's dark out at 4:30 or 5:00, I literally look around, you know, go to my house, you know, walk into the five feet to my house and then I close the door again. And it's really, it's unnerving. It's unnerving to go to the gas station and see signs that say, take your keys and pack a book out of your car and lock it when you pump gas. I never imagined. So what I would ask all the people who have the power to vote to have this, I can't imagine it's more important than the safety of the citizens. And I would just say, just think about if you came home and you saw that your door was open or broken into. Nothing even has to be taken, but that violation, and I just want you to feel that and sit in that when you make your decision of if you're going to give money to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think with that, I'm going to close the comments section. I want to thank everybody that took the time to come speak tonight. I just want to make a closing comment myself is we're all members of the community. We all have family and friends who live in areas or have had family and friends victimized. I've been a victim myself, not in Madison, but previously. So we all understand that wanting to have safety, we moved to Madison because it's a safe community. We recognize that. The Board of Selectmen has taken this issue very seriously with the Police Commission, not just now, but we've been working on this for several years. And we did add additional resources. We've supported the chief in many initiatives with his department, including training and staffing and compensation, as well as other tools and technology. So we don't take these decisions lightly, but we also understand that things change and evolve. And although we've made a lot of progress, there actually has been a reduction in thefts themselves that hasn't stopped people coming into the neighborhoods. And we understand that that's still going on. I have a Ring camera as well. I see the alert. So we all know what's happening. They're not being as successful is because our citizens have taken the initiative and locked up their cars. But we're all worried about going out at, you know, 5:00 in the morning, go to the airport and running into somebody or having their kid come home at midnight from a party and seeing somebody in the driveway. I have a teenager. I have a husband that travels all nights, all hours of the day. So we all recognize that. And so this is part of the process. I think recently there were some incidences that were even more scary to a lot of us. And we heard what happened to some of the residents in town. And so that's where with, I think, a very good and productive discussion with Jim Ferenczi and a number of other people, we agreed that we wanted to move forward more rapidly with some things that we were considering for the budget. One of those things tonight is this technology. So rather than waiting for the budget process, we do feel that this is something that deserves priority and that's why we're addressing it tonight. So I just want to give people comfort. We know what's going on. We recognize it and it's something we take very seriously. So thank you for your comments and we'll move on. There's also an opportunity at the end of the meeting that you can make public comment as well. Okay? So with that, we'll move on. We've got a few other items before we get to the technology thing. So with that, we'll just real quick, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, great. Item six passes. Okay. I number seven, specifically take action to adopt a resolution regarding the town's strategic plan. So I'm going to, first of all, well, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, okay. For discussion then, the town has worked very hard on the strategic plan over the last 12 months. One of the priorities in here, so I'm sure people on here will know, is public safety. And it's going to help us set our budgeting priorities going forward. So there's kind of a North Star guiding a lot of what we do in town. There were some comments that we received from the public at our public hearing last week. We actually got some emails, so I know there might be some of those individuals online. And just so you know that we did make some amendments. And I'll have Jocelyn real quickly. I made some suggested edits to account for the public comment. And if Jocelyn could screen share real quickly, the very, a few tweaks. And I think our board is good with a few tweaks that we would like to go ahead and finalize the strategic plan, which is an exciting milestone because this has been a long process. We talk about public input. We've had hundreds of citizens involved in this process and then almost a thousand participated surveys. So it's been a, a long, extensive process. So just looking at the public comments, we tried to add, and I, we don't have to go in detail to these. I think the board received these earlier, my suggestions. But we did add in references to farm and scenic roads as an important thing for preservation. And then I just highlighted out, there was some confusion about the zoning regulations. And I said, let's just call out the fact that the Zone, Board of Planning and Zoning Commission is going to be undertaking a comprehensive uh, assessment of all the regulations, not just housing, but generally. So that is something that's gonna be happening. So that's an important objective that we know want, want to get completed. And so I left the other one standalone that we had insisted uh, uh, objective one point one um, as it. So I didn't change that language. So that way it kind of covers both bases. Um, and that was really it. So um, I think that people, when they see this, they should be content. I know uh, Jen had, has seen it and Scott, Al and uh, Bruce, just real quick, you saw those comments and you're good with them? Um, okay, so um, with that, we're in agreement with those uh, minor tweaks in language that reflects public comment. Um, I would love to just um, and we can amend the resolution. I sent you a draft resolution, which is quite lengthy. I don't know if you want to put that on the screen, Jaclyn? I guess I should read it.
I can do that. Yep, hold, hang on a second.
Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna read the red, the resolution. So um, everybody take a seat. The strategic plan resolution, whereas the Board of Selectmen believe that the development of a specific mission that uh, vision, core value statements, goals and objectives, and an implementation plan for these goals is vital to the success and sustainability of the Madison community. And whereas the Board of Selectmen undertook a strategic planning process in twenty twenty-three to develop a ten-year town strategic plan and engage professional consulting firm with expertise in the field to guide us through the process. And whereas the goal of the strategic plan is to act as the cornerstone of all the town government commits delivering to the people of Madison in the future, an attractive, sustainable, healthy and welcoming environment, premier schools, abundant natural cultural resources, responsive government and a high-quality public services. And whereas development of the strategic plan involved extensive community outreach, including resident and town employee surveys, interviews of over fifty town officials and community leaders, three public focus groups, one community visioning session, one employee focus group, one two-day retreat of town leaders and senior staff and two public information sessions. The town also established a volunteer strategic planning advisory committee to assist in the drafting of the plan, including the vision and mission statements. And whereas the Board of Selectmen collectively endorsed the vision, mission and values as foundation of the strategic plan's five key areas of focus, safe and healthy community, high-performing government, financial and environmental sustainability, thriving business and economy and modern and innovative infrastructure. And now therefore be resolved by the Madison Board of Selectmen as follows. The attached town of Madison Strategic Plan twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-four is hereby approved and adopted as a statement of priorities and goals to guide future allocation of town resources and prioritize its implementation. Two, the attached strategic plan shall be made available to the public on an ongoing basis. Three, the attached strategic plan may undergo revisions and updates as deemed necessary by the Board of Selectmen to assure town government operates in accordance with the town's values and vision for the future. Done this eighteenth day of uh, December twenty twenty-three, the town of Madison. So I, that was moved, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So any further discussion to that?
I just have a, uh, a comment. This was very much of the eighty percent acceptable twenty percent. So we did not seek a hundred percent unanimous agreement amongst the community or even amongst ourselves. Um, we felt that this was a document that was good enough to get us going. Um, I intend to support this. Um, but I also intend, when we come across those twenty percents that I didn't agree with, to have vigorous discussions um, about them. So um, we don't vote on line items here. We're voting on whole and on whole. This is, this is worth putting in place. Um, but um, that doesn't mean that we won't have good discussions um, about the implementation down the road.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's well, well said, Bruce, in the sense that, you know, I think we've emphasized the eighty-twenty point. Um, nothing is ever perfect. And I think, you know, to that point, it has to evolve over time too. So there's nothing said that we can't go back and relook at this um, and add to it, change it, update it, modify it along the way. I think that's the point of this document, but at least it gives us something to point towards as we're planning, as we're budgeting. As we're looking at safety, as we're looking at all the things that are important to our residents. This is far more than, I think, you know, you and I have been on this board for five terms now. This is, you know, far more than we've had at any point. So this is a big step in my.
I'm going to support this as well. Um, I think this is going to be an invaluable document reflecting the public's opinion and wishes. It's gonna be invaluable when we sit down to start allocating resources. So um, I think this is going to come with me to every meeting when we're talking about the budget.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, Al. And you know, I was really impressed with how many community members we had come out throughout the entire process, really read through the document, give their feedback. We took all of that into consideration. And it is going to help put us as a Board of Selectmen, our other elected boards, our appointed commissions, all in alignment, um, give us those goals to work forward to. And I think that's the ultimate goal of what we wanted with this particular document is to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page, moving forward in the same direction. Um, with the knowledge that those good discussions, as Bruce mentioned, are going to continue to take place, you know, as we look at different initiatives. Yeah, I think um, I was, it was a very eye-opening process for me because I think it's interesting how people perceive things very differently, words at times or expressions. Um, and you understand now that the public is saying things sometimes differently, you might see them. So I think it was very educational from that standpoint. It's also not gonna be, it's not a perfect document. It's eighty percent there. Um, there's also a whole im- implementation plan that's gonna be, the board will continue to see pieces of as we start moving forward and um, using this. And we will probably, we will update this prior to ten years, I'm sure. But you know, once again, this is kind of this north star that with guidelines and goals and objectives that helps keep us kind of all in alignment. And um, and I think it's a, it's a great way to kind of start um, uh, allocating resources and keeping them, keep us all moving in the same direction.
I have to say, of all the things we've done in the last number of years, the public engagement in this process was awesome.
Yeah.
It really was.
It was great. It was great.
That was encouraged.
And, and it was, it was broad. Uh, you know, there was definitely some groups that were very good at coming and, and, and making sure that their issues were addressed on the plan. But there was lots of, you know, different opinions and things like that. So I want to thank the public. I want to thank SPAC again because they gave up their time as volunteers to work on this. And our consultant isn't here, but I thought she did a great job. She was really good at herding cats uh, to get us here. Um, so um, I guess with that then, um, I'd like to then take a vote. So all in favor of approving the strategic plan uh, resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Well, it's nice to put this to bed.
Yes.
Kind of, or actually just starting now, a whole other process.
Now it's the action planning.
Yeah, so, so just so the public knows, these minor changes will be added and then the graphic designer is gonna complete this. So I'm not sure how quickly. Uh, the draft, I think, is still available online without these few comments. There are not many. Um, and they'll complete an actual document that'll be nice and pretty, um, that people can print out. Um, we'll get some colored copies printed as well. Um, and stay tuned. So we'll continue to use that. Um, and uh, I look forward to it. Well, and so with that, I guess we'll move on to the next seven of the agendas. And we have a lot of people here that want to hear this discussion. So um, item number eight is uh, discuss uh, discussion on recommendation from the Board of Police Commissioners on the implementation of secure, security camera technology and possible use of our book fonts. So I'd like to um, now invite Chief Drum and um, the Chair of Police Commission at Dowling. Uh, here, welcome again. And we have Officer York as well, uh, to talk a little bit more about this camera technology. We aren't going to be, just so people understand, this is not a budget discussion about staffing. This is focusing on an immediate request that um, I know that they feel strongly would be a force multiplier, so to speak, that might, um, and it's a new technology. Um, and so with that, I know Chief Drum has a presentation, so I'll.
Of the uh.
Are you, are you understatement? So, yeah.
Yeah, as Chairman of the Board of Police Commission, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to make a very brief remark. One of the things that uh, we've heard, certainly at the Board of Police Commission at recent meetings, uh, is the importance of public safety. And this is a topic that uh, I don't think requires extensive discussion or debate. We all want to feel safe. We want our families to feel safe. We want our homes and property protected. And we want this not at different times. We want it all the time. That's what our expectations are. To deal with this situation, I think we need to recognize two critical elements. First, the economic and sociological issues that have led to the current circumstances are longstanding, they're complex, uh, and they're not likely to change anytime soon. Uh, added to this is the fact that Madison is a very accessible community. Uh, our neighbors are, can reach us uh, as well as larger urban areas through an extensive network uh, so that we are here and other areas of the state, good and bad, know we're here. Uh, one of the things that we've also need to recognize in terms of first critical factor, we're a small residential community and we've got finite resources. That is certainly not gonna change dramatically. So second critical factor, when we look at that, is what we can do is change our response to this situation. Um, we have the opportunity together to enhance and upgrade our, our s- strengthen our partnership and our relationship and our understanding and communication with critical boards such as the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. I believe we've enjoyed a, a strong relationship with them. But this certain circumstances is going to, I think, require greater cooperation, greater communication, greater understanding on all our parts as, as we move forward. Uh, the, the issue, uh, the budget request in front of you uh, has been thoroughly presented, developed by Chief and his leadership team. Has been thoroughly discussed and vetted by the Board of Police Commission. We have always felt uh, in terms of working with the chief, that collectively, we can come up with requests that there is strong across the board agreement. It's not the chief's budget or the police commission's budget. We've been able to develop it so that it is our budget. This request with technology uh, allows us to take the best available current technology. And I'll, and also as we look down the road in terms of looking at fiscal two thousand four, two thousand five, couple that technology with a planned thoughtful uh, recommendation to look at our staffing levels, we think will allow us to have a best outcome. Uh, so it is this resource request and expansion that we're advocating to you, starting with the technology tonight. But none of us should make uh, the mistake as we discuss this tonight and in the future, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget request. None of us should take the position that there, we've done it, we solved the problem. What it's going to take is a, a collective and cooperative approach looking at a multi-year uh, plan, strategic plan to deal with public safety in our community. We think, and we look at this, this responsibility is broad and it's intertwined with elected officials, with appointed officials, with the police department, and even with the public to say, this Olympic ring is, is going to allow us to be successful in this. Uh, I think together, we, with the capable leadership of the Madison Police Department, we can beat this challenge going forward. And it's one that I think that we've heard tonight is really essential to understand that this is going to be a multi-year process. As we look at technology, which is absolutely critical, and look at how we pair that with the, the staff resources. In my opinion, still, uh, we should not forget that there is no more effective public safety measure developed than a trained, dedicated, professional patrol officer. That is at the heart of, of what we look at when we come together with these budget requests. So I thank you very much for allowing me to make these comments, certainly Chief Drum and Officer York are some of the key individuals in developing this. And, and I really think it deserves your thoughtful consideration. Thank you.
Would you want to consider it?
Huh?
Do you have to go on?
No, it's just, so this is the time to do your, your presentation. Just talk about what we would be appropriating for.
It's a request for camera technologies for town Madison. And this is a proactive approach to experimenting, uh, not just here in Madison, obviously across state. Uh, it's purposes.
She sat up there just so you know, I don't know if you saw that presentation.
Hold up on that. I'm just making jokes. Essentially, it's a, we're implementing a town-wide uh, technology of stainless cameras with real-time. Uh, every day in the city of Connecticut, they publish uh, they call the hot list vehicles that are stolen, using crimes and shootings. Real-time, the cameras gives the capability, what they call LPR license plate reader. If the car comes stolen, we'll know that uh, immediately. The officers in the cars are running the technology, having the car, the vehicle, see the alarm. It's hypothetically two, three o'clock in the morning. And there's a car that keeps coming through, playing two different cameras. Obviously that's something going home. It's something different opportunity. That would uh, assist our officers greatly by having the ability to know that from the cars that moving in the direction of wherever we're getting the sound. Uh, we've looked, we've looked at cameras before. And it's like all good things, it's a double continuous price goes down. So cameras all enter approximately sixty-seven hundred dollars each, with three-year warranty, that's all in. It's all the equipment we need, plus the installation of units. Right now, locations I'm looking for, both north and south Madison, at critical entry points to town. There are also some from the northern neighborhoods, also in Charlotte. With that, I may, Chairman.
Well, uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, just gonna give a brief presentation about the benefits of having this technology. Uh, just before I start, uh, Captain Harkins and I have been doing a lot of research about this technology. And um, the Stratford Police Department, uh, Stratford Police Department had one of the best surveillance uh, systems in their town. Uh, when I was in charge of the detective bureau, I saw it for the first time. And then um, I reached out back to them. They have a camera system of over ninety cameras throughout their city with this technology that we're gonna request and utilize. And it solved hundreds of crimes within their town. It's even benefited so well, they expanded outside of Stratford. So other towns now are connected. Um, all nearby agencies are connected. So they're just, every year they keep building it and it's just an incredible system, what they have. But just to go back on, just, you know, some of the benefits of these cameras. Um, surveillance and license plate reader cameras can help prevent and deter criminal activities by automatically scanning and capturing license plate numbers of vehicles passing through specific areas. This data allows law enforcement agencies to identify and track suspicious or wanted vehicles in re- real-time, preventing potential crimes before they happen. And in short, as the chief mentioned, this is a force multiplier. You know, having these cameras on the road, as the chief mentioned, the daily hot list that comes from the Department of Public Safety and Department of Motor Vehicle. People that break into our cars around town are in stolen motor vehicles. They stole the car from a city or some other neighboring agency and they're coming through our town. If one of these stolen vehicles passes one of these uh, cameras, our officer is gonna get an alert instantaneously, saying that this vehicle just drove by Route one and seventy-nine. So it's definitely, it's just more eyes on the road. It's a force multiplier for us. Go to the next slide. So also too, it's a, and, and a great tool for investigative support. So surveillance and license plate reader cameras offer value support in criminal investigations. By documenting the movements of vehicles in and around a crime scene, investigators can establish timelines and potential suspects. This technology can be especially helpful in cases involving missing person, abductions, or identifying patterns of criminal behavior. And I'll give an example of surveillance, the um, armed robbery we had at the commercial business on Route one. How we were able to get a suspect and apprehend that suspect was the surveillance cameras that uh, commercial business had. We were able to get those pictures uh, instantaneously to nearby uh, law enforcement agencies. And we were able to have a suspect in, in hours. So just having a tool like this will just help us tremendously in this fight for this. Okay, next slide. And also the efficiency. So surveillance cameras and license plate reader cameras enable police departments to quickly locate stolen vehicles or vehicles involved in criminal activities, as I mentioned. By automatically scanning and cross-referencing license plate numbers with database. By automatically scanning and cross-referencing license plate numbers with databases. Law enforcement can swiftly identify vehicles of interest, leading to faster response time and more effective investigations. Good, next slide. And also with these cameras, it increases public safety by monitoring license plate numbers. Police departments can identify vehicles associated with individuals who pose a threat to public safety. But also this tool, as I'm gonna mention, includes tracking down vehicles involved in motor vehicle accidents, hit-and-run accidents, amber alerts. So if we get an amber alert, we could enter that plate into the cameras. And if, say, a vehicle that's linked to an amber alert, it will get a hit instantaneously if that pops on one of our cameras. And also identifying vehicles linked to individuals with outstanding warrants. So that hot list that we all receive from DMV and Department of Public Safety. Will also let us know when there's wanted criminals driving around the town. And such capabilities contribute to creating a safer environment for the community. And the last slide, just, it's, that's the camera technology, it's a Hike Vision. And I have two videos from YouTube. The first one will show what the cameras will actually, the images they will give us as the license plate reader. And the second one is the actual solar cameras that we're looking into, so you can all see what it actually looks like. Both are like two-minute videos.
Hold on one second, I'll open it up.
Playing a YouTube video on a YouTube recording is a bit meta.
Glad she's in charge of this.
Nice question, like, so are there any of our neighboring towns that are using this technology right now?
Most of the cities have them.
Like Guilford, Clinton, Saver, did any of them?
I think they've tried recently.
Yeah.
I know that.
Sorry, can you see and hear this? I just wanna make sure.
You can't hear it though, we can see it.
It's not like they're.
Maybe just play it.
These are gonna operate off of a static IP supported by battery and solar.
So like when installing.
So like that's a great image of what it will.
It's kind of like a Ring camera on your service. Stand by, we're gonna take it, sun's speed, set up, you'll pass. Solar camera technology. It's not likely to be able to pick them up at speed. Jeremy and Jack.
So this would though, just track, this would just be scanning the license plates, right, rather than.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not speed enforcement, I'm sure we'll get those questions, right? See cameras up and then push watch, it's gonna be, we're gonna have speed cameras, so it's just, it would just be used for that.
You'd have to apply for that. This company comes and installs it. I guess. We have to get the. Structures that hold like the speed signs.
Lieutenant, how will these be mounted in residential neighborhoods? Oh, he comes from.
Similar to the speed signs. In fact, you probably see some of the speed signs that have a taller structure, that's what kind of they care.
Can you combo them or?
And will there be any limitations as to where we can mount them, like state roads versus town roads?
As long as we have the, we have the permits for these speed signs, you know, so you're free to put this on at this time.
Like I'm just thinking that Green Hill and Route seventy-nine, brand-new.
Yeah.
Mammoth poles seen up there, can we put it up there?
We're gonna have to get D O T approval for all of that.
They do do that.
They do.
But that was quite, took a long process to get approved.
Okay, you want me to show the other video as well?
Yeah, if you want, because that will be the actual solar one, so this is what they'll look like.
Okay.
Chief, how do people with bad intentions deal with these cameras when they have noticed?
How do they deal with them?
Yeah, what do they do when they, do they just?
We have like what, throw a rock?
Regional teams have LPR readers in cars. Generally, it's a U-turn if they spot them.
And another example, if there's license plate readers in Madison, I'm gonna go to another jurisdiction and it doesn't have them.
So it's a good deterrent.
Absolutely. What's that?
Return of law.
They'd still be able to see the vehicle though, like the make and model of the vehicle.
What would, for example, if a car drove by that did not have a plate, would that immediately pop up as a flag, just like a stolen car would?
So the other thing that, so there's multiple settings that we could do, I didn't want to get into like the technology weeds, but. We can also set a motion, so we can essentially draw a line through the image of that camera. And when something passes that, either a person, a vehicle, a dog, a deer, anything. It's gonna send off an alert to our officers, so if we know an area is getting hit by, you know, motor vehicle theft at this or an hour. We could set that motion alarm and be very proactive, so when that alarm, when that motion alert goes off. Even if the vehicle doesn't have a plate, guess what, our officers are gonna get alerted in real-time, instantaneous.
What does it do with all of the law-abiding license plates that go through it? That data that's collected?
It dumps it eventually. They live in the camera, Ring camera over here, which you see in a store, gas station.
Is it stored on servers that that you have or is it stored on contractor?
Only so many days or so many months.
But secure, secure servers, right, so it's not like open access, that data.
No, a motor vehicle is public.
Can somebody FOIA the the plate data?
They could, there was a discussion now on LPR readers. But I I don't know if that's gonna go anywhere. It's, it's a very useful law enforcement tool.
And let's talk about retention times for this.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying, usually they have a retention.
I mean, the the direction I'm going is, is, you know, just for the day, like, I I wanna know how many times a day Al is going to Starbucks. Can I FOIA the camera data and to to see where Al is going?
We're gonna look up Al's plate though.
Well, I know.
We would, we would read it at the, at the time it occurred, but we had to go back for a crime, armed robbery somewhere.
No, but would I be able to, freedom of information request Al's, Al's travel data?
Well, all you could get from a motor vehicle, I mean, I would use its card register. On a FOIA right now.
So the camera data isn't accessible?
The camera data, it is to an extent, but I'm saying is like, I can't go in, I can't go into the generation of the name and registered owner. I can't for law enforcement, not for your FOIA. It's like an anonymous caller for complaint, I cannot tell you all about the complaint, I can't tell you who called it in. So there are things that, there are protections for it. Just someone to add to this time. Alright, so this, this is a. I think it's time to come for us, we have to think of other ways to have a second one besides uniformed center. I could probably put the town, town officers on the midnight shift, it's Murphy's Law. On the ten. That, things will still occur, right now, it's not just a town, I sense it's throughout the state, let alone the country. There's a crisis of juvenile justice. We boxed in a group of people, uh, two weeks ago. Twelve sixteen, Meredith, McHaven, whatever. The same kids were boxed in yesterday in Berker, Connecticut, one wearing a bracelet, a homing device for probation. I don't know what the answer to that's going to be. Juvenile justice, like I said, is, it's overwhelmed. There aren't parents involved, a lot of the cases aren't even grandparents. A bunch of kids living in apartments in different cities. So when it first occurred, two, three years, but I said, this, this can't be real. And it is, it's, they're probably gonna suffer because it's, it's, for them, it's part of what they do, it's convenient. We take for granted our safety. Doors are open, left open, cars, it's nice to say, God, I live somewhere, I believe that I should be able to leave my door open on my car, but that's not the case this day and age. Hopefully, they keep claiming this, particularly the state of Connecticut, that general sound is gonna start taking other, you know, initiatives, but. You know, we're also having second chance starting in January, raising the records of people that committed crimes. So I I think it's a decision a lot, a lot higher and farther from us. But I think we have to use the best practice we have for law enforcement, use the best tools that we have available to us. And have a measured response at this point, see where we can go with it. Thank you.
Chief, how many cameras are in this additional appropriation?
Twelve.
And do you anticipate when you come back, budget season, to be asking for more?
I I have them on my, I put the cameras initially on my additional request. And I understand that this is being considered in partner funds.
Yeah.
So I I could leave it there if you recommend I do that.
Well, so I I wanna, I just wanna remind the board that in March, this, we had this conversation and we said we would support an appropriation. It was part of the budget request. We would support an appropriation once you knew better what you wanted, right? Because it was, you had like a little placeholder in there and it was far less than what we're asking for tonight, right?
There is a placeholder.
Yeah, it was something, and we said, come back to the board when you're ready. Because we were all supportive of doing it, but we didn't know what it was, right? And you weren't quite sure what technology was gonna work best and. So now he's come forward with a specific request, it's a a bigger number than perhaps we anticipated, but it seems a lot more powerful. I think we all envisioned, you know, CCTV things with some person sitting there and watching, you know. Are they, really, are we gonna be able to do that, you know, but this is obviously taking. The, you know, using the most current and up-to-date technology in a really efficient way. And and it's also proven in other communities to be successful, which is, I think, really important as well, so. So I think you're following through on a conversation we started early this year. And so that's why I think it's worked, it's really kind of, in my view, an old budget item that we're just now coming to address. And and the suggestion was to use ARPA funds, just because we're going through the CIP process, we're going through all this other stuff. This fits well with ARPA, you know, because this really kind of started during COVID, SLO, I should say, during COVID. And it ends a public safety-related issue, and so we thought, let's use ARPA. I did wanna invite, maybe we do it on that, we get to item number eight, if we're ready to talk about funding. Have Stacy talk about where we are in ARPA funds too, because we we don't have a lot left, but we do have money to cover this left. So I I'll open it up again for other questions about this software.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure of a question per se, but just, you know, listening to the conversations of of the public, listening to your presentation, listening to previous conversations. I I like that comment made earlier about a watershed moment, that this is an opportunity for us to lead in the shoreline. And maybe others will follow, which to me is a pretty powerful statement, right? So if we lead, maybe Clinton and Guilford will follow us in other shoreline towns and becomes a network. It becomes a, you know, a bigger tool to deter, to enforce. So I I'm really optimistic about our ability to do this, I love the creativity of the ARPA funds. My one worry is, I guess, well, twofold, one is maintenance and then secondly is subsequent cameras down the road, but it's something we'll just need to plan for a budget. I I do think if we get twelve cameras, it would be nice to see data. That showcase the power and the benefit of these twelve cameras, as opposed to just adding more cameras before we see the benefit. So I think there's gotta be a little bit of a cost-benefit conversation.
So in in that spirit, because I think we're hearing a lot of the promise and you've got some good, you know. Inadequate information from other towns and everything that are having success with this, so it certainly seems like this is a well-thought-out strategy. And I use strategy with the smallest, because I don't hear you saying, this is gonna fix everything, right? This is, this is strategy with the smallest, it's a part of the 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 solution, not the solution. In the next budget cycle, when the request in front of us is for another twenty cameras or another twelve cameras or whatever it is. What questions should we be asking that show that or that allow you to show how this project has been successful? What what does success look like after the implementation of these cameras?
Well, we we have a pretty good success rate currently capturing this, the misguided youth. We we have them, we have some that have been regular customers coming through our lobby. And and to turn them over and release them. So with the cameras, yes, when identifying, we'll have the personnel to get there hopefully and to respond. There's also other areas there that we talk about in the department that, you know, Ring, a lot of folks have Ring cameras. It's a very economical property to put a power on your house, which measures a lot, it it very good, high quality. Ring also offers these neighborhood, they call it like a neighborhood fence. That information is terminal though, so people send us up, I got three today that were sent to us, that occurred north and south. And we recognize some of the same offenders we've had in other. It's a matter of time, because they make mistakes, sometimes to be, you look at the camera, sometimes they don't have gloves on, they touch things, we're able to. Listen, you know, to get DNA off their touching of the car or something else, a cigarette. They, we recover the car, there's always chances because the. More of the normal, there's rounds from nine millimeter casings in the car and others. So we're able to put together a case that's solid for the cities, a lot of homicide they have. So I I think for measured devices, we have successes, but hopefully more successes. Hopefully, and what we spoke about, they say, hey, Madison is a pain in the butt, we need to stay out of there. You know, we had that, we enjoyed that nine, ten years ago, basically drove burglaries out of town. You get caught in Madison. I work with great officers, we have some great talent that came from other areas to join the department. So I guess to, I, in March, we revisit this, hopefully have successes. At my heart, hearts, I don't wanna see people afraid to go out in the lawn with a dog. Maybe that two AM smoke, we just watch the stars, I don't want that. I want somebody's child, but we gotta be afraid to go out there.
And and I think that's, so this is the moment for us to say, you know, we expect to see. You know, a reduction in the number or a, so so this is an opportunity to set not only our expectations from a budgeting perspective, but also public expectations. About what these cameras do, because they're not gonna be magic.
Well, we have, with regional traffic squad comes in, they have LPR readers. The cameras in our cars, our current car contractor, our cameras with the technology, but it'll share with our circle. That's been enhanced to all LPR readers in the cars, the car park station area. You'll see officers parked down, maybe on the border coming in, late, if you're coming late at night, so what's your, your shoe do on there? The door is a running place, as they can grab them coming off the ramp. I think that's a few hits and and it's been successful for us, but that's a lot of work. And unfortunately, we get called to a lot of alarms, out of holes, human, besides other crimes that occur in town. I, with the regional traffic, they have the LPR readers. They have extensive radar, they come in our town and they'll write over our tickets in an afternoon. They'll capture unregistered vehicles, wanting people, prom warns during that afternoon. So having this technology obviously works, because they can sit there and go, well, that car is coming down, that person is wanted, no. Any listing of a vehicle, its own address, that came back, but it hit the state system. Okay, so they're using the technologies and we're using the strength of six different communities that we have agreed with. So I'd love to see them start working on it in the evening hours, that'll have tremendous impact. So there's a lot going, there's a lot we could possibly do.
Should we maybe move on to number nine?
Yeah, so why don't we, then we can talk about the.
Sensing where we're heading.
Yeah. So moving on then to item number nine is discuss and take action to approve. So moving on then to item number nine is discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request from the Madison Police Department in an amount up to $80,000 for security cameras pending Board of Finance approval, project funding through ARPA.
So.
Okay, so, and, and just real quickly, I think if Stacy is on, I think she is, just to give the board an update about where we are in ARPA funding, so we know the balance and the, and for those who don't know what this is, this is the American Rescue Plan Funds that the town received back in 2021. We've been using this for many communities purposes over the last two years upon projects. And, and so the thought was using this for this specific software request. But we're getting down to the, to the, I think we have $100,000 left, correct Stacy?
Yes, so right now we have a total of 233,000. We do have a pending submission for about 130,000. So after that, we need to discuss the, the status of that one, we will have 133,000. So if we approve this, we will still have over $50,000 after the $80,000 approval for these cameras.
And, and then there are also a few items, we're gonna be reviewing projects that either we couldn't complete for various reasons. We approved using our funds and then, you know, we'll come back and update some of those balances. It's not a lot, but there's a little odds and ends to. And to remind her that these, we have to earmark essentially all funds by the end of 2024 and they have to be spent by 2026. So.
Yeah. We have to commit, commit to funding by the end of this coming calendar year. Yeah, so, and we do, we have a list that we wanna go through and finalize and bring it back to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, to see what we wanna do, but this is where we are right now.
Okay, so I think we have funds available and it will prohibit this last, I know they're trying to gather more information. That was on the lighting request, I think, we're still waiting on that. That if they're able to come forward with a proposal. So I, I would advocate that we use funding for ARPA and I do support the appropriation. I think this has been something that I know the police commission has been talking about for a while wanting. It was submitted earlier this year, we discussed when they found what they wanted to come back. And so here we are and we know the public would rule like this. It's not a, you know, we can't be Pollyannaish about this, it's not gonna solve all the problems, but it's the stuff in the right direction that will make a difference and continue to monitor it and ensure that it's, you know, doing what we want it to do. Any other thoughts from board members?
Yeah, just that I agree with that 100% and I will get it as an investment in our community, but also really in the state overall, because the more statistics that we can compile as a town, you know, it makes it, it makes it harder to hide at the state level from what's happening. And maybe we can help to usher along some changes, you know, by providing more data to the state as well.
Yeah, I would agree with that and also just, you know, a public promotion, the Ring camera, you know, what's gonna make me feel better is not having every week one of those pop, somebody roaming around, you know, popping up and knowing that they're in the neighborhood and not getting those alerts anymore, but I encourage the public to send them onto the police department. Because I never did it, I, I was never one recording, but I never bothered to send it in. But hopefully those people who do record them should send them in and maybe we'll see fewer of those now. Any other comments from board members?
No, I just, again, back to this update. So maybe down the road, we'll get an update on how it's, how it's working, assuming.
And I think also, if you could just, so for expectations, understand that this is a hot technology that you're gonna have, you're kind of subject to the vendor, right? So it's not gonna be like instantaneous. And the other thing is this has to be approved by the Board of Finance.
Yep.
In, in January, they're meeting, so.
That's all.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. All right, great, well, thanks, motion passes, so this will go to the Board of Finance with our recommendation. And thank you once again to the public who's been here, really appreciate it. I think it's important to hear from you, what matters to you. Because sometimes we're kind of in our little world, doing our work, thinking that we know what people are thinking and it's always important to hear from what people are thinking, so thank you for coming out on this. So any, I guess we're gonna move on to, probably no one wants to talk about the rest of the stuff. We're gonna move on to item number 10. Item number 10 is discuss and take action to award a contract between the Town of Madison and Polon Municipal Group for purchase of for 2023 Chevy Tackle Police Vehicles and 1 2023 Ford Escape plug-in hybrid in the amount of $205,771 approved in the 2023-24 capital program, police vehicle replacement, highway vehicle replacement schedule, and to authorize the first selectman to sign all necessary documents and contracts. Okay, any further discussion on this, this is all budgeted.
I would just say this is another opportunity.
I agree. That, that and the appointments on the back, I would say the same thing.
Well, that was because it was the year end, we usually always had it separate month.
But otherwise, yes.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Good, so that's on your cars there, see? We just put another $200,000 in the police department. Okay, and then. Item number 11, discuss and take action to award a contract between the Town of Madison and Bob Thomas Ford for the purchase of a 2024 Ford Transit van, 2024 F350 pickup, $131,800 is approved and the CIP replacement schedule authorized me to sign all necessary documents. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Okay, great. So I'd send out an email, knowing this might be a little bit lengthy today, on the communication facilities that is tabled this item till our first January meeting and then we'll have a good discussion about it, because it deserves the good time.
It might get rather lengthy, so.
Yeah. It is, it's complicated too, and there's a lot to talk about with this, so I think this is not the good time. So we'll table that. Item number 13, discuss and take action to accept a, a public health infrastructure grant in the amount of $40,380 for the Department of Public Health. For public health workforce development and to authorize first selectman, women to sign all necessary contracts and documents pending Board of Finance approval.
So.
Okay, so this is Trent, this is a grant that the state is putting out trying to, because there's just a need for more people in the area of health. So I don't know, is he on?
Basically for retention.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Hey Trent, so as you know, we've had a long meeting, so if you wanna do the two minute or two second.
Yeah, yeah, no, no problem, yeah. This is just a, a grant that was awarded by CDC Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to the all states. And 40% of their funding is gonna be allocated to local health departments. And what we're, what we can do with that money is kind of sustain our workforce. It, it targets retaining current staff, training staff and recruiting staff. It's $40,000 over four years, so for, for Madison, it's gonna look like, you know, recruiting some, some paid interns, some, some help with equipment and, and definitely some training. So it, it, that's probably the long and short of it, but, you know, it's just a good grant to go after.
I don't think the grant talking is long enough, Trent.
The only thing that wasn't clear to me is it $40,000 spread out over four years or is it 40,000 a year?
40,000 spread out.
Okay. Still free money we should take up.
Yeah. Nice job with that, Trent.
And with the understanding that any kind of, you know, personnel issue, these are interns and things like that, so there's not gonna be any need to offset that, so. All right, so with that, all in favor, say aye. Okay, 13 passes, thank you Trent. Item number 14, discuss and take action to accept the ARPA statewide senior center grant in the amount of $56,322 for the senior center kitchen and cafe repairs project, pending receipt of grant award of the State of Connecticut and approved by the Board of Finance on 12/13/23.
So moved.
So this is actually, he's ready to go on this in January. It's to repair the flooring and make improvements in the kitchen. It's a state funding that they have left over from ARPA, so every senior center in the state gets the grant. And they just, for some reason, haven't actually sent out the letters yet. So I just wanted to give them the position, if we get the letter next week, you can go. Yeah, so I don't know, real quick, Austin, since we're, I think they're good on it, but go ahead.
Yeah, exactly, exactly what you said, so this money is appropriated by the, the state, it's ARPA funds that were designated to all senior centers in Connecticut, so each town received a, a portion of the, the funding and our portion is $56,322. And we'd like to use it to repair the kitchen and cafe at the senior center, the flooring, walls in the, in the kitchen and flooring in the cafe. It's, it's much needed and will help us continue doing what we do.
Great.
Okay. So it's a little like out of order normally, basically. Support it, so all in favor, say aye. Great. All right, hopefully we'll get the notice soon, because I know he's got a lot of planning to do with senior center to, to get them, they're gonna have to have lunches, I guess, handled, box lunches, right? You're just gonna do it, set like a takeout lunch or something?
Yeah, so we'll do, we'll do takeout lunch like we did during COVID, just for the, the time of the project. And then we'll continue to do meals on wheels every day like we do, just with a different.
Different menu.
Different, different menu, yeah.
Okay, great, so I think we've got it on my mind. So item number 15, did we vote?
Yeah, we voted.
Yeah, item number 15, discuss and take action to transfer $46,902 from the CNRA Police Department locker room remaining project balance to the senior center kitchen and cafe repairs project pending receipt of grant award of the State of Connecticut approved by the Board of Finance, 12/13/23.
So moved.
Okay, and this is basically just supplementing, taking some leftover money from our CIP project and, and paying for the senior center project using that and the grant. Okay? Any other questions on that?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Great, okay. All right, motion passes, good. And then this is award the contract, discuss and take action to award the contract to Town of Madison among the senior center cafe repairs project in the amount not to exceed $103,224 pending receipt of grant award from the state and to authorize for selectman to sign all necessary contracts and documents.
So moved.
Okay, any questions on the contractors? All in favor, say aye. All right, and I think we talked about, Austin, the contractor qualified for the grant, right? There was no issue in terms of, we have to make sure that that would qualify with the grant restrictions.
Yeah, there's no, no stipulations with this grant for contracts, but they are pre-approved contractors through the town.
Okay, good. Okay, item number 17, discuss and take action to approve the following appointments. And so just for the public's benefit, every, at the end of the year, we have to do reappointments or new appointments. It's kind of a shift over with the boards and commissions with seats expiring. So I will read, 20? They're presented on the agenda, so.
Yeah, I think I'll move them as presented.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. With gratitude for people stepping up and to serve our community, so thank you. Item number 10, 18, discuss and take action to approve the following reappointments as presented on the agenda. Okay, okay, all in favor, say aye. Great. Thank you once again with gratitude for continuing your service to the town, so we appreciate everybody who has stepped up.
Yeah, that's a part.
Yeah, out of people.
A through Y, so that's A.
Yeah, well, we have like 50 boards and commissions, so.
Yeah, wow, that's awesome.
So it's great to see all these people willing to continue on service. Item number 19 is just a housekeeping item, discuss and take action to approve calling the annual town meeting at Town Campus Room A and on Zoom Thursday, February 8th, 2024 at 7:00 PM for the following purposes. Review the State of the Town report, review five-year capital plan, to receive the annual report of the permanent awards, commissions, agencies, committees and town's honor report in accordance with Article 2, Section 2 of the Town Charter.
To vote.
All right, great, this is just a, a thing we do every year, we present a new presentation. Everybody good with that date? Yeah, all right, all in favor, say aye. Great, town meeting, annual town meeting is set. Yeah, well, just the public who is seeing this, this is not a voting town meeting, it's just a presentation about the state of the town that's required by the charter. So you can attend by Zoom, we will have it be hybrid. Item number 20, discuss and take action to approve an annual resolution and delegate the first selectman as the appointing authority on behalf of the Board of Selectmen for selected duties. Okay, so I sent around a draft of this and I know Bruce had flagged that he wanted to this add one amendment to this to specify for budgeted positions, which I would agree to, I think we talked about that, I just didn't actually put it in the.
Yeah, that's great.
So I will add that and of course, I will say for any full-time budgeted position, okay?
Yeah.
That'll be the amendment after full time. So I will read the resolution and then this is just for the public's benefit. The charter gives, says that the Board of Selectmen has to vote on everybody that's in the Town of Madison, full time. The problem is, it means people have to wait for a meeting in order to get hired and the board is not usually involved. This is like all the way down from somebody who's a dishwasher or a fields, whatever, person, all the way up to a, a department head. A department heads, we want the board to participate in because of the significance of those positions. This just is allowing me to handle the appointments for anything, some of these routine positions, so that we don't have to kind of, we can, it does become a problem, people are doing benefits and resignations and things like that to choreograph it around our board meetings. So that's the purpose of this. And then by doing it on an annual basis, if there was ever a concern, if somebody in this office is appointing their brothers and their friends and then you have the ability to pull this back and say, no, 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 everybody has to go, everything has to go through the board. So that's why we do it by resolution. So I'll read this real quick. Whereas in accordance with the Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen shall be appointing authority for the Town of Madison in collaboration with the First Selectmen and the Police Commission. The Board of Selectmen may delegate all or some of this authority to the First Selectmen through an annual resolution. And, whereas in accordance with the Town Charter, the First Selectmen is the chief executive and chief administrative officer for the town. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby delegates the First Selectmen to be the appointing authority for any full-time budgeted position that reports directly or indirectly to a department head of the Town of Madison. This resolution is in effect starting January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. It can be renewed, authorized on an annual basis at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, great, all in favor, say aye. All right, awesome. And now we're on to citizens' comments again, so I don't know if there's any, anybody has their hand, no one is in the room.
One hand raised, Sarah Greenwood. Okay. Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Terrific, I'm Sarah Greenwood, I also live on Middle Beach Road. I just wanted to go on the record, I concur with everything that was said about the drama and trauma of the safety issue in Madison. I think it boils down to a couple of things. One is the timing on this, this has been going on for a long, long time, two and a half years. And I'm not sure we really were taking it seriously and what was the plan other than having a PR campaign about lock your door? Kind of blaming the victim a little bit, but it became very clear to me that there are not enough police officers hired by the town to take care of this issue. I do not know what the right number is, I think we're down maybe a couple of police officers, there were three or so that were fired. I don't know if any have retired. But net-net, the cameras are a great idea, but we seem to be dragging our feet. What is in plan right now to make sure that if I walk out the door of my house in Madison, I do not encounter one of these thugs stealing my car and I don't believe that there is one? I wrote a letter to everybody on the Board of Selectmen asking them exactly what was the plan and never got the courtesy of an answer. I do appreciate this open forum, but it does seem that people are reluctant to say, this is the plan that we have put forth for your safety. Again, it's been two and a half years, there are not enough police officers. If we need money, why are we spending money on a community center? We have this amazing library that offers pretty much everything we need in a community center. Take those monies and hire more police officers.
Okay, thank you for your comment. I guess we have one more hand raised?
Yeah, hi, it's Jim Ferenczi again, 147 Seaview. I, I listened to the entire meeting tonight and I very much appreciate the, the discussion and the progress that was made and the receptivity by the Board of Selectmen to the proposal with regard to cameras and expediting that potentially via special appropriation. I, I believe that the game plan here is to make sure that we keep moving forward. We've had a lot of constructive discussions, obviously the, the, the community at large has. Uh, we've had a lot of constructive discussions. Obviously, the, the, the community at large has, has started to make some of their views known. But I think that, that, and, and Joseph Walton said this at the Board of Police Commissioners meeting on Thursday. The, the real test now is execution. Uh, and so getting the cameras up and running as soon as possible, making, making sure as best anybody can, that that gets approved by the Board of Finance. And expedited and implemented, I think is a critical first step. But as others have said, including Sarah Greenwood, who just spoke. Our understanding is that what the police commissioners and, and chief drum will be proposing is, is two things, not just the cameras, but also increasing. The, the number of, of police people on, on, on the payroll, so to speak, over time. And I know that can't happen immediately, uh, but it needs to happen in my view. Uh, because again, as, as, as Ed Dowling said, it's not just the cameras, it's not just technology, it's not just awareness. But it's, 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 it's police engagement with the community and that means police presence. And I think that, you know, again, the, the, the fear, the frustration, the anger that people have, have, have conveyed at this meeting and, and at previous discussions and previous meetings. I think will be allayed to a very real extent, to the extent that we see patrol cars more regularly and feel like they are doing their best. Nobody can do it perfectly, but doing their best to try to act as a deterrent. Uh, I think that will help the community at large. So I would just encourage everybody, uh, on the Board of Select People. And also at the Board of Finance, uh, to basically use every effort possible and use your power as elected officials. To make sure this all gets implemented so that the best we can do as a community, uh, we can all do it and feel like we've done what we can to protect ourselves. Thank you.
Jim, before you hang up. This is not, this is not a back and forth, but I'm going to go there, uh, without the sanction of my Board of Selectmen here. But at, at, at the end of the day, I think to your point, the Board of Finance vote is an important one. I would highly, highly suggest that you rally your troops as you did tonight. And, and get folks at that meeting as well, because I think having the public conversation is the most important thing that can happen. And, and I think it will help considerably.
I, 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 I agree with that 100% and we intend to do that on January 17th. But I would also ask each of you, you have influence. Use it.
I think our, our votes and recommendation are unanimous vote is.
Sends a big signal.
It is a strong signal. So.
Right. But there's, the other, the other part's going to come, right? As part of the budgeting process, which is a request for additional hiring over time. Not immediately, over time.
Yep.
And, and that's also something that we would strongly encourage the Board of Selectmen people, however you guys like to refer to yourselves these days, to get behind.
Um, which we did start two years ago and added officers and will continue to do that as part of the budgeting process. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and comments, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that's it. No hands raised, no ones in the room. So with that, hearing no objection, meeting is adjourned.